Hi, this is Mark Taylor-Canfield, live. I'm near the Seattle Autonomous Zone. And I wanted to give you a sort of a heads up on what this video is about. So an historic thing happened today where the Seattle City Council voted to ban chokeholds and tear gas. So this is an historic moment because folks have been trying to get these crowd control weapons banned since the WTO demonstrations in 1999 that took place here in Seattle when mass groups of people joined together to protest the World Trade Organization Ministerial Conference. And there were huge violations of people's civil rights during those protests and police riots where they used tear gas and flashbang grenades, rubber bullets indiscriminately, especially in neighborhoods in Capitol Hill. So this is a longstanding issue that's been going on forever in Seattle. And finally, the city council has the guts to actually try to rein in the police department. Some public testimony at the beginning of the meeting and you'll see, you'll hear that actually because it was a teleconference because the council is still not meeting yet together because of public health concerns. And then you'll see, and then after that, you'll see the city council voting on these different measures and they'll describe the measures as they vote on them so you'll understand why they're doing these things. Hi, I'm Mark Taylor-Canfield. I'm Executive Director for Democracy Watch News. We're an international news organization that specializes in covering pro-democracy movements around the world. I've also written an article for the National Lawyers Guild, report on the city of Seattle's investigation of civil rights violations during the WTO protests. I was a founding member of the Committee for Local Government Accountability, served as a watchdog group to oversee the city's investigation of civil rights violations during the Seattle protests against the WTO in 1999. As a journalist while covering protests, I've been subjected to tear gas many times. The videos of these events are on my YouTube channel. These chemical weapons are major threats to public health and safety. I've been pepper sprayed in the face while trying to film a violent arrest. I've had flashbang grenades spill over my feet and been hit by pepper balls and rubber bullets. Many of the issues currently being addressed here today should have been addressed 20 years ago after the ACLU, National Lawyers Guild, and Traders of Public Justice recommended to the city recommendations that were never adopted. Look at those reports. Covering badge numbers was a major issue during those demonstrations. And finally, we need to come together to protect public safety by banning the use of these weapons as crowd control. So I was covering the protests as a journalist on Capitol Hill on June 1st. My video of what happened is posted at my YouTube channel. I saw no signs of a riot. I posted a compilation of the videos on Monday night at Instagram and YouTube jokingly calling it the Pink Umbrella Riot. By the way, that officer who attacked the umbrella should at very least be received some additional training in effective crowd control measures. These videos have been seen all over the local media. When police use pepper spray and fire tear gas canisters directly into the crowd, they cause a panic and a crush of bodies, which is very dangerous in itself. This is how rock concert attendees have been killed in the past by being crushed or trampled by the crowd. This is a public safety issue. Firing these devices directly into a large crowds of protesters is not recommended. I've been covering protests in Seattle since the mass demonstrations against the WTO in 1999. Since those events, I've seen excessive use of tear gas, flashbangs, concussion grenades, pepper spray, and other crowd control devices on protesters. During the Occupy Wall Street protests, Mayor Mike McGinn had to apologize for the pepper spraying of 85-year-old resident Durley Rainey. Recently, a nine-year-old child was allegedly pepper sprayed by a Seattle police officer. I have also been pepper sprayed, tear gassed, and fired at with pepper balls while covering local demonstrations as a reporter. Yesterday, I talked to a parent news reporter who was struck by a tear gas canister over the weekend. During protests on Saturday and during May Day events, I've suffered from the effects of flashbang grenades which landed within inches of me. Crowd control devices like these are called "non-lethal," but they can be very dangerous and lethal at times. Minneapolis reporter Linda Torado was struck in the eye by every projectile weapon used by police.
So Councilmember Solon, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Gonzalez. I appreciate that. The bill that's under consideration now from our movement and from my office bans the city from owning and the police from using crowd control weapons like tear gas, mace, blast balls, flashbangs, plastic bullets, and other weapons that are typically used indiscriminately on gatherings of protesters. Some of these weapons like tear gas have been banned for decades from use in war by the Geneva Convention. And yet, the mayor of Seattle, Jenny Durkin, and Seattle Police under her control have repeatedly, on a daily basis, used them since the George Floyd protests began on May 30th against the people of Seattle. As we've discussed before, we've, many of us have witnessed it, many of us have experienced it in the members of the public. And for days, the Seattle Police Department used these weapons on the streets of Capitol Hill. They falsely claimed that the protesters were violent rioters and that they had no alternative. That is absolutely untrue. I mean, it could not be more untrue. They have even attempted to maintain those lives in the face of video evidence showing us that the police were the source and the sole source of violence and that they were not, quote-unquote, responding to any situation, but that they were there with the intention of inflicting violence. We have evidence that the police were source of the violence even further now because after the mounting public outrage eventually forced Mayor Jenny Durkin to pull the police back from the streets of Capitol Hill, the violence has left with them. There is nobody there with riot gear, armed to the hilt, with all kinds of equipment and chemical weapons. There is no such thing. Only the police have them. Here in Seattle and around the country, demonstrators have been grievously injured by these weapons. And an open letter signed by over 1,000 medical professionals has explained that weapons like tear gas and mace significantly increase the danger of COVID. We need to ban these weapons, which have been misused against protests for decades. The police and the political establishment simply cannot be trusted with them. Seattle Police might argue that without tear gas, rubber bullets, and blast balls, they will use even more lethal, even more lethal weapons against demonstrators. We have to completely reject this dangerous argument. The purpose of this legislation is to prevent the police from meeting protests with any violence whatsoever. If the Seattle Police instead show up with more lethal weaponry, that would be absolutely devastating and disastrous, but that would only, and I hope that doesn't happen, but that would only prove the point that this Black Lives Matter movement is making, which is that it does not work for us to have a police state. We need our community to be organized for us to keep ourselves safe and for public safety for all. If Seattle passes this legislation, it will be historic and it will be an inspiration for what movements around the country can win. But we also need to remember that this won't be enough. We will need to go much farther with all the steps that I was outlining earlier, which I will reiterate once again later before passage of this bill. Just wanted to quickly say that in, you know, in terms of making sure that the public is on the same page as us in terms of understanding the process, at some point, Councilmember Herbold's amendment will be considered, which on the face of it claims that all it's doing is clarifying what is, what is, what is crowd control, that it is simply intended to say that the legislation does not apply to non-crowd control situations. But what it will actually do is create giant truck-sized loopholes that will allow the use of these weapons in virtually any situation. The problem is that Seattle Police will abuse those loopholes. Look at what happened after the mayor's much-publicized 30-day OC ban. Seattle Police, to quote one of the public commentators, "simply do not have the track record that should lead us to believe that we can trust them to not use weapons on peaceful protests." We heard testimony from Bettina, who said, "A woman took a flashbang grenade in the chest and almost died and had to be revived with multiple CPR routines."
Agenda here. And then, Madam Clerk, is there any formal language that needs to be done besides Councilmember Solon's language around withdrawing amendment two and three?
I am double-checking really quickly the men that we just passed. And it looks like the actual subsections are numbered correctly. So we are good to go at this point if you want to consider this bill as amended.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Music to my ears. So colleagues, we are, we now have an amended bill before us. Now is the time where we can take further comment on the underlying bill as amended. Councilmember Solon, you will have the last word as the prime sponsor of the bill. Are there any other council members who would like to address the substance of the bill as amended before us? Councilmember Peterson, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Solon for introducing this bill. I was an early supporter of it. And also wanted to thank our Public Safety Chair, Lisa Herbold, for reviewing it carefully, thinking it through, you know, from additional lenses so that we could have these additional amendments. And thank you, Council President, and the city clerk for guiding us through all the amendments. I appreciate, I hope the public can see that we're trying to be unified here and work together on these serious issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Any other comments on the bill? Okay, I also want to signal my thanks to Councilmember Solon, who quickly introduced this bill, as well as the previous bill that we just looked at around chokeholds. So I just really want to thank you, Councilmember Solon, for introducing this bill. Many of us had made public statements before the introduction of this bill about the need to ban the use of chemical weapons that were intended for, for foreign wars and to address terrorism in the aftermath of 9/11. The fact that those types of weapons were being used domestically on our own residents is just abhorrent. And so I was an early supporter of trying to use the levers that were available to me as a council member in the background to use the power of persuasion to stop the use of those weapons and those tactics on our people who were peacefully protesting. And unfortunately, those, those calls for action and for a pivot were, were not answered. And when we had a moment, a small, brief moment of thinking that it was going to be answered, that the call was answered to stop using those chemical weapons, we saw that within, within approximately 24 hours, that same tear gas was being used once again on peaceful protesters and within one of the densest neighborhoods, not just in the city, but the densest neighborhood in the state, where we kept hearing reports from families and from other residents who weren't even protesting, who were just existing on Capitol Hill, who were suffering the consequences of this nondiscriminate use of tear gas. So I absolutely support this legislation. I look forward to submitting it to the court for further review, again, following on our model that we used in 2017 when we considered the police accountability ordinance and then submitted it to the court for review. We understand that we have an obligation to do that and know that our city attorney's office will pursue that path. And hopefully, we will get affirmation from the court as it relates to the policy choice that we've made here today. And again, really appreciate the commitment to bringing this forward, to doing it quickly because we do have a sense of urgency around making sure that this is addressed quickly. Of course, we still have the issue of all of the chemical weapons that are currently owned by Seattle Police Department that are in the inventory. The language of the bill does not necessarily require them to dispose of those, that existing inventory. So we will have to have a conversation about how we effectuate the disposal of those items without the unintended consequence of having to send those weapons to other cities where they will be used in ways that will have negative impact and harm there as well. So looking forward to having that conversation. I did see Councilmember Moskata, as I was talking, raise her hand. She's, she's feeling inspired now, so we're excited about that. So I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Councilwoman Moskata. If any other council members have comments to make, please do raise your hand or shoot me a quick text message to let me know that you have comments to make. And again, Councilmember Solon will have the last word on this bill. Councilwoman Moskata.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Solon, for introducing this bill. And Council President, I think you did inspire me to want to chime in on a few more pieces. We talked a lot this morning and in the last week and a half about the type of situations that we've seen. And I want to give you a list of how I think that this piece of legislation will immediately help protect the health and safety and save lives of residents throughout the city. This is not just coming out of a desire to de-escalate the strategies police are using. This is actually coming from a direct result within the last two weeks of people calling us, emailing us, grabbing us while we're in the street to tell us what they've seen. From the Inspector General, the list of, of claims that we've heard are people who have experienced having a thumb amputated because of a flashbang device, a protester who is now partially blind due to rubber bullets being used. We heard stories of a woman who had to be resuscitated after getting hit in the chest with a flashbang device. We know the story repeatedly of a young boy, seven years old, getting sprayed in the face with pepper spray. And this is in addition to all of the other stories that we're hearing just about excessive force, officers kneeling on the neck of two detainees in our area, officers punching a youth on the ground the Friday night before the main Saturday night protest, an officer punching a person on Saturday night, failure to secure the rifles in their cars. These are the type of complaints that we're hearing from across the city. So at least taking away these weapons of war and to the good points that were made earlier today, the weapons that have been deemed illegal in actual course of war, getting those off of our streets and having those not used against our residents is critical. I thank you for putting forward this bill. And I just think it shows a strong show of solidarity across this entire council that every single person was wanting to act quickly last week and today to move forward with this legislation. It was probably passed due before this week, and I appreciate the urgency in which it's been brought forward to respond to the calls for action from the community. Thanks all.
Hey, Councilmember Herbold, please.
I just want to underscore how much I appreciate the fact that all council members voted for my Amendment 1, particularly as it related to lifting up the, the role and the importance of our accountability partners, again, in 2017.
The language in Councilmember Herbold's amendments, but does not incorporate other parts. So could you walk us through what portions of Councilmember Herbold's Amendment 1 and 2 you favor and what, what specific language you believe is, is problematic to the underlying intent of, of your council bill?
Yes. To, to, to do it in a brief summary, I will say, just to keep it short, I will say that I, I don't, I don't necessarily think the other amendments are that great, but I don't object to them. I'm glad that Councilmember Herbold has withdrawn her intention to delay the vote on the bill, so that's not no longer a question. What I am objecting to and what you heard, what we all heard, public, powerful public testimony on is on page 2 of what is titled as Amendment Number 2, that is, and that shows sponsor, Councilmember Herbold, and that is Section D in the, in the, in the amended version by Councilmember Herbold. That Section D is amendment is what I'm objecting to. And I just want to read that out and explain it a little bit. That amendment says, "Kinetic impact projectiles, chemical irritants, acoustic weapons, directed energy weapons, water cannons, disorientation devices, ultrasonic cannons, or any other device that is designed to be used on multiple individuals for crowd control and is designed to cause pain or discomfort is not a crowd control weapon for the purpose of owning, purchasing, renting, or storing under the subsection if the device is used for a purpose other than crowd dispersal." The problem with this amendment is that it leaves up to the, up to the police to decide what they were actually doing and, and claim that it was not for crowd dispersal or for crowd control, called crowd control. Because, you know, I mean, just to explain, this amendment from Councilmember Herbold would create an exception that says that any of these weapons, the number of weapons that I mentioned, including direct energy weapons and tear gas and flashbangs and ultrasonic cannons, can be used if, and I quote, "the device is used for a purpose other than crowd dispersal," unquote. What this means is that the ban on owning all these weapons would be somewhat meaningless by itself because the police can say that they are owning them to use for other purposes. It could, you know, it wouldn't stop them from buying them. It also mean that they could be used anywhere if, as long as the police claim that they are, that they didn't, that specific incident of use of that weapon was not for crowd dispersal. For example, if the police say that there is a person in the middle of the protest and they just don't like that because the person is saying something or because they threw an empty water bottle at the police, then, and if the police respond to that person by spraying the crowd supposedly to stop that person from throwing a water bottle, then suddenly, under this amendment, if this amendment passes, then this is, this would be allowed by, under this bill, under Councilmember Herbold's bill, which is basically for the police to respond to somebody throwing a water bottle by spraying the entire crowd, including children with mace or pepper spray or tear gas. And I use this example because this is not a hypothetical situation. This is exactly what we saw again and again on the streets of Seattle with police officers using the fiction that they were somehow in danger. And I've seen Chief Best making the same arguments that somehow sometimes the police were hurt. How is it possible that the police were hurt with water bottles? I mean, let me, let me be clear. Let's, let's, let's contrast the water bottle with the police who have been, they don't come just by themselves as police officers. They come as riot police. They come there to start a riot, which means that they are armed to the teeth with riot gear, protected with helmets, face shields, body shields, shoulder, arm, calf, and shin pads, batons. I mean, it's absolute gaslighting too for the police to even remotely claim that we need to allow them any leeway to use this, these weapons. On Sunday, when the SPD, you know, Sunday, a week and a half ago, and the SPD used flashbang, tear gas, and pepper spray on myself and other protesters, they, at that point also, they claimed it was to get people to back up, not to disperse. And we were doing nothing. We were peacefully protesting. Those are our streets. We were demanding the right to walk on those streets. That's all we did, is walk forward. So anytime we make a restriction on police brutality depending on the purpose or the intent of the...
Maybe it's just because it's the short turnaround. This request of the OPA, OIG, and CPC to report back to council if this not in any way delay implementation of this legislation. The bill, or the amendments, like the bill before it, requests that there be notice of the prohibition against crowd control weapons to the Department of Justice, the court, and the monitor in accordance with the consent decree. Use of force is at the heart of the consent decree and changes to city policies must be submitted to the court. And the amendment indicates that the council recognizes the role of court there. And then also, similarly to what we just did in the earlier bill, the amendment expresses the council's intent to support labor relations and the implementation of the prohibition against crowd control weapon use. And then finally, it adds as an attachment, the less lethal weapons in protest report from the Office of the Inspector General for Public Safety jointly issued with the OPA on June 12th, 2020. At this time, I would like to offer or invite, I should say, amendment to my Amendment 1 as it relates specifically to the section where we exempt the prohibition of crowd control weapons when a device that meets that definition is not used for crowd dispersal purposes. This has become, I think, a distraction around the intent of the amendment. And, you know, from my perspective, offering this was just merely consistent with the title of the bill itself, which talks about crowd control weapons and recognizes that there are some circumstances where the, the police department has things to do besides crowd dispersal, where a less lethal tool like these might be useful. Again, I invite any council member to, to amend council, I'm sorry, Amendment 1, to remove the new language under Section D, which says kinetic impact projectiles, chemical irritants, acoustic weapons, directed energy weapons, water cannons, disorientation devices, ultrasonic cannons, or any other device that is designed to be used on multiple individuals for crowd control and is designed to...
Nice balance now where we have, are going to be able to achieve the underlying goals that Councilmember Solon originally had while also still creating a clear pathway and signal for the three accountability organizations to still clearly, through Directive of the Ordinance, have an opportunity to formulate recommendations without delaying the implementation of the underlying goals of the council, council bill. So with that being said, are there any other comments? Councilmember Strauss, you have comments, please.
Thank you, Council President. I'll keep this short. I know that I've said many times that weapons of war have no place on our streets here in Seattle and used against the residents of our community. I realize that I've said that so many times. I do need to let the record reflect here in this moment as well. Hearing from the veteran from North Seattle during public comment today was very important to me, to hear about how weapons of war used on our, that are not even allowed to be used on our enemies on foreign soil, have been used on our residents here in Seattle. The residents of Seattle are not our enemy. They are the ones that we are here duty-bound to protect, as well as your words, Council President, about using these, these weapons in the densest neighborhood in the entire state. So thank you to the sponsor for bringing this bill forward as, as quickly as possible. And thank you, everyone, for your diligent work. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss. All right. I think we have exhausted, folks who want to make comments. Looks like we are ready. So Councilmember Solon, you want to, you want to take us home on this bill unless, Councilwoman Warren, I see that you just lit up. Do you have comments you want to make?
I was just saying, going to do my famous line, "For the love of God," but go ahead.
Well, now you said it. You, you correct the record. Okay. Councilmember Solon, you get the last word on this bill. Take, take, take us home so we can take a vote on this and get the law on the books.
Thank you, President Gonzalez. I really must congratulate everybody who has fought for this. These are major victories. Undoubtedly, as many have said, we have a long way to go in terms of police accountability, let alone really eliminating police violence and brutality and addressing the longstanding racism and oppression in our society. But still, these are major victories. They're historic, and the movement must celebrate its victories, both this bill that is about to be voted on and the bill that we just passed on banning chokeholds. I thank all council members. I'm assuming this is going to be unanimous from all the comments that we've heard, and I really appreciate that we are going to have a unanimous vote on this, on the, both these important bills. I congratulate everyone who spoke in public comment and who have been speaking up in the last two days because it was through your intervention, through your getting organized, that this bill that's going to be passed is now going to be a strong bill with no loopholes. Needless to say, and as we have said lots of times before, passing legislation is not going to be enough, but yet it is crucially important for the movement to hold its elected officials accountable to make sure that the strongest possible legislation is passed at all times. So I wanted to thank the movement. This, this victory belongs to you. If you faced chokeholds, chemical weapons, and rubber bullets, if you marched, rallied, organized, testified, if you weren't able to rally and organize, but you made a phone call to an elected official, you held up a sign, you talked to a neighbor, or if you did anything to stand up for the Black Lives Matter movement and the movement of all working people against police violence, then today's victories are your victories. I especially wanted to congratulate all the hundreds of young people who faced down just unbelievable, unspeakable violence right in our district, in District 3 on Capitol Hill, and whom it was my honor to meet and have lots of political conversations with. In fact, we were sprayed with mace and tear gas when we were in the middle of very exciting political conversations. So I wanted to thank many of them. I obviously won't be able to name everybody, but I specifically wanted to name Keel Sean Turner, who's been on the front lines of this struggle and who's also a member of Laborers 242. She's been a union member. I also wanted to thank Payday Payton, Tristan Spears, Joey Weiser, who's been documenting the struggle for days. This victory belongs to everybody who was there on Capitol Hill, everybody who has been marching. been marching. And especially wanted to make a mention of all the families and friends who have lost their loved ones because of police murder, like the family of Charlene Lyles, the family of Jay Taylor, the family of Jaunty Williams. And indeed, there are too many, because at least 30 black and brown people have been murdered by Seattle Police since 2011. And I've read their names before, but I won't be able to read them now. But this victory belongs to the families of all of those community members whose lives were lost at the hands of the police. I completely agree with the council members who've said that we do have to discuss the disposal of the weapons that are in the hands of Seattle Police right now. We absolutely do not want them to sell them to another jurisdiction, whether it's another city, another state, or another country, because this is about international solidarity against police violence and racism. So absolutely, we will not let that happen. But we do need to figure out what happened to that. And I welcome input from scientists, if they know if there is any socially constructive use at all for those weapons, then we should direct it there. So I welcome your input to my office. And in terms of next steps, I think it's important that, just like we had a strong showing of the community today at the meeting for these two bills, let's hope that we have a strong showing for the Budget Committee. On Wednesday, there's going to be a public comment signup that opens at 8:00 a.m. The committee meeting will start at 10:00 a.m. As you know, you can easily find out how to sign up. Just Google Seattle City Council Public Comment, and you'll find the online sheet. But you'll have to sign up at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, June 17. As you know, there are important tasks ahead of us. We need to fight to defund Seattle Police by at least 50% and make sure that this city is not controlled by police repression, but by community organizers and through social justice and restorative justice. And we are also discussing the tax Amazon legislation to tax big businesses in order to fund a major expansion of social housing, to address homelessness, to fund Green New Deal programs, and most importantly, to fund jobs that will be, the union jobs, union, good-paying union jobs with priority hire and pre-apprenticeship programs to address the inequities faced by our marginalized communities. Another next step I wanted to mention is, on the same day, Wednesday, June 17, at 4:30 p.m. at Cal Anderson Park, I hope everybody who's fighting in the Black Lives Matter movement will join us, because there is a rally being organized by the rank and file of Seattle's labor movement, and they will be demanding that the local labor movement leaders, the Labor Council, the King County Labor Council, remove the Seattle Police Officers Guild out of Labor Council. And so this is the rally titled, "Seattle Police Out of Our Labor Council," because this is our labor movement, and there is no rule in our labor movement or
...... to start. So congratulations, everyone. Will the clerk please read into the record Agenda Item Four?
Agenda Item Four, Council Bill 119803, requiring that certain uniforms peace officers do not cover with a warning band with serial number that is engraved on their badge and letting Section 3.28.130 of the municipal code declare an emergency and establishing an immediate effective date all by three quarters of the city council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will move to pass Council Bill 119803. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Herbold, you are the prime sponsor of this bill, so I am going to recognize you in order to address this item.
Thank you so much. So today, we're voting on Council Bill 119803, which will require officers to display their badge numbers while allowing warning bands to observe the death of officers on a different part of the badge. Many, many constituents have contacted the council alarmed that badge numbers were not visible in the two weeks following the murder of George Floyd. After I announced that I was drafting legislation, Chief Best issued a directive to all officers to display their badge numbers while wearing warning bands. I, of course, appreciate that order, but believe that this policy must be adopted into state city law. The legislation amends Section 3.28.130 of the Seattle Municipal Code, which was created after the 1999 WTO protests, when people noted at that time that they could not view the name tags of officers. So then, former City Council Member Peter Steinbrooke sponsored legislation to create a new section of the municipal code to require display of name tag. This legislation is emergency legislation, so it will go into effect immediately upon signature of the mayor within the next 10 days. It would not have the additional 30-day waiting period for non-emergency legislation. The bill also requests that the Seattle Police Department work with all other law enforcement agencies whose peace officers reasonably may be anticipated to enforce traffic or criminal laws in Seattle pursuant to Chapter 10. RCW, to develop a policy that would require these peace officers when enforcing these laws to conform with requirements concerning badges, identification devices, departmental identification on uniforms, and oral identification that is consistent with Seattle Municipal Code Section 3.28.130. The Seattle Police Department is requesting the Seattle City Council with a proposal for the policy by January 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold, for that description and for introducing this important bill. Are there any comments or questions on this bill? Okay, I'm not hearing or seeing any. Again, I want to thank you, Councilmember Herbold. I think we have all discussed this bill quite a bit before today and do agree with the approach that you've described, which is about not just allowing this kind of policy to exist at the discretion of whomever might be the chief, but to actually make sure that this is made concrete and long-lasting through legislation. Of course, a future council could disagree with our policy position and change that, but I think it's pretty clear that this council agrees very strongly that this should be the policy and that it should be codified in law and not just exist in a police manual or in a directive from the chief. So appreciate the wisdom in nonetheless moving forward this legislation and appreciate you bringing this for our consideration. Councilmember Moskata, I see that you raised your hand, please.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Herbold, thank you for bringing forward this legislation. I just wanted to ask you a question, both as the sponsor of this legislation and as Chair of Public Safety. We know that even after the chief issued that directive, we heard reports of individuals who are still covering badge numbers. Can you remind folks what to do if they see that happen after this ordinance has passed and what the process should be?
It would be a violation of SPD, both SPD policy and city law. The Office of Professional Accountability has a complaint process to investigate complaints of violation of city policy. And there's also the ability of an investigation of the violation of city law to go along the investigation of a violation of city policy. I do want to note that badge numbers are in different places, on different people's badges. Sometimes they're in the center, and sometimes they're at the bottom. And I know that some of the examples of